All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Let's go ahead and start our Monday, December 9th, 2019, Toewalton City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and start our normal way with a pledge allegiance led by Council President Grimes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So now we'll go to announcements. Item number one, we got the year review from the Toewalton Youth Advisory Council. Come on up.
Good evening, Mr. President. Good evening, year review members and members of the council. My name is Steve Fitz.
I'm Melly Morris.
And I'm Noah Gilson.
And we're here to update you on the YSC activities in 2019.
One of the things we did in 2019 which took up a lot of our 2019 was develop our mission statement, which is the Toewalton Youth Advisory Council works to improve the lives of youth by building relationships, advocating for diverse needs, and providing a link from youth to government.
We work to achieve our mission through advocacy, activities, and education.
To achieve our mission through advocacy, we have these monthly council updates, and we also attend the Oregon Youth Summit. Additionally, we have a city day at the Capitol, and we provide input on city projects, including the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, V-City USA, Toewalton Water Supply, and programs and events.
Achieving our mission through activities includes volunteering at many city events, such as Movies on the Commons, West Coast Janet Pumpkin Regatta, Story Nights in Holiday Light, Snowball Dance, Toewalton Blender Dash, and Viva Toewalton.
We achieve our mission through education, both of others and ourselves, by putting on Project Friends, our anti-bullying workshop, and attending National League of Cities Congressional City Conference in Washington, D.C.
This is a picture of us from Project Friends in May, and we are going to continue to work on that again for this year and then the next. We'd like to say thank you because President Fading in YSC provides opportunities for our leadership development, civic engagement, and community service, and we're looking forward to challenges and rewards of next year.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Comments? Well, thank you, guys, for doing this. I know you guys spent a lot of time on the activity planning, and I know you did quite a bit of planning on the anti-bullying effort with Project Friends. Now, it's interesting, that picture, I look at that, and just remember how loud that auditorium was. We were doing that, I was like, holy capoly, but you guys did a great job there. I just want to thank you for everything you've done this year, and looking forward to what you're going to be doing next year in 2020. All right.
Actually, I want to put a bold exclamation underlying to what Frank said. It's so amazing, I mean, every city event, every community event that I go to, you guys are there volunteering, and I just think it's wonderful. I can't, I mean, I don't think you put a total number of hours that you guys volunteer and that you give to the city, and it is a lot. And it's good days and bad days, and rain, and sun, and wind, and everything in between, and it's so fantastic, and especially the things that you guys put on for the kids, with the haunted houses, and the Blender Dash, and the Movies in the Commons, and just all those things that include, you know, Toewalton residents of all ages. And I just, I admire what you guys do, and I'm just so proud of you guys, and I thank you so much for how much you give to the city. It's very valuable, and we appreciate it.
Thanks. Next item on the agenda is a new employee introduction, new police officer Hector Aguilar.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Bill Steele, your chief police, and I get to introduce our newest police officer in the city tonight, Hector Aguilar. Hector started with us on November 18th, so he's been here for a couple of weeks. Hector grew up in Cornelius, graduated from Century High School in Hillsborough, went on to Pacific University in Forest Grove, got his bachelor's degree in sociology and Spanish, and then went to work for the city of Forest Grove as a police officer, where he was there for about four years, and then he worked for us. So, coming to us as a certified police officer, Hector doesn't have to go to the state police academy, he's already been through that, so now he gets to spend some time getting familiarized and oriented with the city of Toewalton. He already knows Forest Grove.
They probably want him back, so.
Yeah, and if he goes too long, he'll be out there driving around, calling the calls on his own, so he's got a video now. You know, I emailed you guys recently about the importance of us hiring the right people, and Hector's a perfect example of that. I think he's a perfect fit for not only the department or our community, where we're happy having him, and we're looking forward to what he's got to offer us as a new sport in his career.
All right. Well, welcome. We met each other at your official unofficial swearing in, you know, the ceremonial swearing in, and welcome you to Toewalton. We look forward to you staying with us for a long time, and maybe achieving one day captain or chief. You know, we're not going to let you get away like Forest Grove did, and welcome to Toewalton. We talked before about, you know, how community policing is super important here. National Night Out is a big event for the police department every year, and that's how our residents connect with the police department on a very positive level, and they get to know the officers. The officers get to know, you know, the folks in the neighborhoods that are patrolling. So, welcome. Any other comments? Come on up and do the handshake gauntlet.
That always sounds so weak. I remember he's armed, so we have to carry weapons.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here.
All right, so now we're up to public comment, and public comment is a time where you can address an issue with the city council on something that's not on the agenda tonight. Let me get my formal thing. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the city council regarding an item that's not on the agenda tonight, please keep your comments for about three minutes. If there's anyone here who would like to address the council, you can do so. You don't have to be signed up. You can just, you know, come on up, state your name, you don't have to say where you live. Ideally, it is in Toewalton. Don't have to give us your street address, and let us know what we're doing, good and bad. I don't have anybody signed up. Do I have anybody for public comment? That's a rare event now. I mean, yeah, we, good.
With the city.
With the city?
Yes, with the city.
Yeah, well, okay, so that's done. That's nice. So now we're up to consent agenda. The consent agenda, or those items that are considered routine will be adopted by one motion unless someone on council would like one item removed, or an item removed and heard separately tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda, oh my god, comprises of: Item one, consideration of the system development charge annual reports for fiscal year 2018-19. Item two, consideration of resolution number 5478-19, amending the city of Toewalton fee schedule, and rescinding resolution number 5471-19. And item three, consideration of approval of a new liquor license application for Toewalton Station, Bar, and Grill. During work session, Council Morrison requested that item number two be pulled from consent and heard separately later tonight. Are there any other items people would like pulled from consent? Do I have a motion for the other two items?
Does he need to make a motion?
I don't think, he doesn't need to make a motion, Sean, does he? Just he just pulled.
No, it's a privilege, isn't it?
Yeah, okay.
It's a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? It moves forward. All right. Moving on to general business. Item number one, consideration of resolution number 5479-19, accepting the Toewalton 2040 work, including the policy priorities, housing needs analysis, housing strategy, economic opportunities analysis, and economic development strategy. Welcome. You're missing Jonathan. Where's Jonathan?
I'm in North Carolina.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. We're so pleased to be here tonight at this kind of milestone, at the, which will be the conclusion of Toewalton 2040 at this point in time. With me is Aquila Travis, our community health director, and Steve Cooper, who is our planning manager. I am the project manager and for Toewalton 2040, this is the senior planner for the city. At the city council meeting on November 28th, if I should make a call this year, the planning commission chair, Bill Beers, provided recommendations to council to acknowledge the Toewalton 2040 work and the draft policy priorities. The council accepted the planning commission's recommendation and directed staff to draft a resolution for acceptance at this meeting tonight, and I will now pass it on to Steve.
And so, we are here tonight to respectfully request, based on the planning commission's recommendation, that the council accept the resolution and its associated documents. This action would finalize the policy priorities work for the Toewalton 2040 project, which in turn would serve as the framework for a work plan in 2020 that will propose ways to address the identified policy areas.
And I'll do my best to fill in for Jonathan. Basically, say that we're just so pleased with the community's effort and response and their engagement in this project, and we're so thankful to them for working with us, and we also wanted to thank you for your support in this project. Last time we were here, we, you know, we felt really good about the presentation we gave and your direction, and then one of our consultants kind of burst our bubble and said that the implementation is still to come.
Yep.
That is the next big step. But this was really huge for our city to identify where we're at today and how we can move forward, and so it's going to make for a busy 2020 and a lot of work, but good, necessary work that will just help our community and help support our community. That is our presentation.
All right. Questions? Comments? Discussion? Paul?
Yeah, first, again, I said this at the last meeting, but the work you guys did was terrific. But one of the things I want to point out about how great our city is, at the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, Clackamas County is working on a housing needs assessment, and they also encompassed the study of, in round numbers, approximately 12 cities, it might have been a couple more, I don't, I didn't write the number down, I don't have it in my packet here. Only two cities in Clackamas County have completed their needs assessment. There are a couple of cities who haven't even started yet, and so, again, hats off to staff for getting in front of this, getting ahead of it, doing an amazing job in public outreach. I know I attended a couple of different meetings that you held, and they were all extremely well-attended. There were some amazing questions that were asked, and there were always answers, and I was very impressed with the staff and Karen, with you, and the involvement you guys have, and I thank you again for all the time and effort that you put into it.
Well, it's quiet up here. This is rare. Yeah. I too would also, like Paul's mentioning, like to thank you for everything you did. As I mentioned in the last meeting, it's the rare thing that you hear very disparate interest in the city all agree that a process went well, and that they all thought they were heard and listened to, and the concerns addressed in the end product here with our strategies. As you mentioned, Aquila, now the hard part is, you know, those action items to make those strategies reality by 2040, and make Toewalton, continue to have Toewalton be an economic hub, but also have that stock of affordable housing that people can live and work here, and continue to be a terrific community in the southwest metro area. So, any other comments? Someone want to make a motion?
I'd like to move to adopt resolution 5478-19. I'm sorry, 5479-19.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 5479-19. I should have to, I'm going to type this on my laptop. Roll call? Right, that's what I thought. Everything's just going to be roll call. So, go ahead, start with Paul. Valerie?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Robert?
Aye.
Maria?
Yes.
Nancy?
Sorry.
And I vote aye also. It's unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you for all the work again.
Right piece of work, Chris.
All right. So, item number two, consideration of ordinance 1429-19 relating to building codes, amending Toewalton Municipal Code 4-1-010 to adopt state building code updates, adding new provisions, and declaring it an emergency. Chris, good to see you again. It's been just a few hours.
Mayor, council members, essentially this ordinance is an amendment to adopt the most recent state building codes into the municipal code, specifically the Oregon Structural Code, Mechanical Code, and the Energy Code. It's an emergency because it takes effect January 1st. There was a grace period from October 1st to January 1st, and there was a lot of reason to believe via the Oregon Building Officials Association that the state was going to grant a longer grace period, but that did not occur, and so, us, like many of the jurisdictions around the state, are simply updating the code this far.
Now, might I correct? I remember voting on this in the past. Does this happen pretty regularly, yearly or biannually? I remember doing this before.
It's usually a three-year cycle.
Okay.
Oregon's been a little bit behind on some of the, some of the codes. We haven't adopted the Commercial Code in like five years, but it's usually on a three-year cycle that the model codes, the international codes are updated, and the state modifies those and has jurisdictions that are.
Questions?
I have one question.
Answer.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, excuse me, the things that we are updating, are any of them, or do any of them relate to earthquake refitting or restructuring, or anything like that, for that type of engineering?
So, forgive me, and I'll try to stop myself from going down a rabbit hole.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, it's kind of a.
No, it's a good question. An interesting thing with, there's been many changes, and something that Aquila and I were going to also share, here in a short period of time, I'll be before you again in asking to adopt at the municipal code some of the changes in the administrative portion of the building codes. Due to the fact that the state with these new codes, new updated codes, took out a number of things that were normally adopted in model code and municipal codes, roughly 26 items. And so, I'm going to ask for those to be read adopted into the municipal code, even though not in the state code, and many of the jurisdictions around the state are doing so, and the state has allowed us to do that. One of them happens to be seismic upgrades of buildings.
Okay.
The state has, is no longer in the business of regulating seismic upgrades to structures.
Really?
Oh.
Correct. In fact, they're not even going to be regulating or holding the certifications for inspectors who are able to do rapid visual assessments of structures after a seismic event.
That's weird.
From what I understand, that might be taken on by the state fire marshals office. The state is no longer even certifying inspectors around the state to inspect those structures after a seismic event. So, that's maybe also something we do locally as well.
Wow.
Not to go, again, go down the rabbit hole, there's quite a few things that the state has taken out of the model code adoption that had, and they have said, municipal codes, you aren't empowered to adopt those locally if you were.
Okay.
So, this tonight is just an update to get to, excuse me, tonight is just to get us to the current codes that the state has adopted, and said, as part of the program, you will enforce these as well.
Other questions? Comments? Bridgette?
So, you said the basics are energy, there are two other ones.
Yeah, so the Commercial Structural Code, the Commercial Mechanical Code, and the Energy Code.
And can you tell us just a little bit of the changes in energy code?
Yes, just a little bit.
Just a highlight?
Yeah, I didn't bring my books with me tonight, but there's quite a dramatic change with the energy codes. Instead of going with the Model Code, International Energy Conservation Code, adopted on an international and mostly national level, the state of Oregon has decided to adopt a unique Zero Energy Code, and it's based off of ASHRAI, American Society of Refrigeration and Heating Engineers. And it is quite a dramatic change, and it will affect a lot of the costs complying with the Energy Code for a lot of commercial builders and developers. It is something that building inspectors and officials around the state are really coming to grips with, understanding how to regulate the code, and especially how to interact existing buildings that are being remodeled and altered, and how those comply with the current Energy Code. So, there's going to be a large learning curve. All of the city of Toewalton inspectors have gone through code update classes, including the Energy Code class, but I'm very confident that the Oregon Building Officials Association and the state itself will see that there needs to be more education regarding just the Energy Code aspect of this new code, because it's quite, it's quite different than the state has had in the past as far as their Energy Code compliance, and anywhere around the country, to be honest.
Correct me if I'm wrong, that's not tonight, though, right? The energy piece is not what's on the agenda tonight?
It is.
Oh, it is? That's part of what's on the tonight? Okay, okay, all right, all right, thank you.
The Commercial Energy Code.
Is part of what's on tonight, okay.
Correct. Yeah, and it doesn't come into effect until January 1st, and there is a lot of industry folks who are already quite aware of many of those requirements, and they've been looking ahead quite a bit. We've had several questions already since October 1st, so I think just as an industry, it's going to be, like I said, quite a learning curve for everyone.
Paul?
Thank you. A couple of questions, including one for our city attorney. So, if I understand you correctly, and as I'm reading this correctly, basically, we're trying to align our code in accordance with the state of Oregon and laws and ordinances they've already passed, correct?
Yeah, they've passed and said that local jurisdictions, you will need to start enforcing them by January 1st.
By January 1st, okay.
And it's a part of our memorandum agreement with the state.
So, if we do, if we do nothing, then the state just automatically supersedes what our current code is, correct?
It's a possibility we would be in violation of our agreement, because our agreement, if you have for you, is number seven of the MOA, says that we will not enforce any other codes different from the state building codes.
Right, but I'm just saying, we would then just, by doing nothing, the state takes precedent over our code, and our code becomes, and that's why I said it's really a question, and there's two questions for you, Sean. First is this one that, and I'm not saying, I'm just asking what the consequences are, because usually when we're doing this code changes, we have a lot of participation from the community and engagement with the stakeholders in terms of what impact it's going to have, and there doesn't appear to have been any, I don't know, maybe the state did some or not, but it also sounds like we have no choice in the matter, because we're bound, and I'll let Sean answer that question, and then the second question, Sean. The emergency provision, what and how does that whole process work, please?
So, as far as the question on whether or not it supersedes, so the city is adopting by reference the state building code. If we don't do that, one, there's going to be confusion legally as to what code applies. So, somebody could argue, come in and argue and say, "Well, city, you didn't adopt within your jurisdiction what the state requires, so I'm going to only, legally, you can only enforce what is under, under our code." It creates some legal issues, and I haven't fully dived into those. If that's something that the council is interested in knowing, I could certainly dig into the legal ramifications of not adopting that, but I think Chris is right that the implication would be that the state may have to come in and take away the authority that they've delegated to the city with respect to enforcing the state building code. So, that certainly would be a legal risk that the city would be taking in that. As far as the emergency clause, so any ordinance can have an emergency clause. What the emergency clause does is allows for an ordinance to be effective before 30 days. So, under our charter, we have, our ordinances are effective 30 days after enactment, and emergency clause allows that enactment to be done sooner than that. It can be 29 days, it can be immediately. In this case, it's effective January 1st if the council approves that. That does not have to be unanimous, but in order to enact an ordinance in one night, like tonight, that action has to be unanimous. So, even though the emergency clause itself wouldn't have to be, because we're enacting an ordinance in one night, it has to be unanimous tonight.
Other questions?
I have a motion.
I got one more question before you make a motion. So, for those folks, this takes effect, takes effect on January 1st, so.
So, let me, let me correct one thing, as the city manager pointed out in our, in our rules. So, by charter, we don't have to have it unanimous, but by council rules, it does have to be unanimous, as far as the emergency clause goes.
So, if I have, if you're working on a permit right now for a building project, these come into effect on January 1st, they're not subject to these new rules, correct? They'll finish out their permit process under the old rules, and then if I file for permits after January 1st, I'm one of these new rules, right? Okay, all right. And then following up on what Paul said is that, so is the building community aware of these changes, and like you said, we haven't done anything outreach at the city level, but I'm assuming like HBA, the commercial builders, commercial realtors, all know this is coming?
The Home Builders Association has taken an active part around the state, and as I stated, the Oregon Building Officials Association has had a lot of conversations with state representatives, and the League of Oregon Cities has as well, from what I understand. There's been, even the American Society Civil Engineers representative in Oregon has had a lot of conversations with the state, and even the state fire marshal's office has tried to have a lot of collaborative conversations with the state building codes division. So, there has been a lot of conversation and a lot of frustration, to be very honest with you, council members, especially with building officials and inspectors who have been diligently enforcing these codes for, since the mid-'70s, and there's been some drastic changes, just this cycle alone, larger than any others in the past, and hence the request for a longer grace period, which was denied, and so, many building officials don't believe there's been enough of the stakeholder feedback that the state placed, but nevertheless, the building codes division has said, this is, this is the direction we're going, and you need to adjust to.
But the state's not going to take the heat, you are. When you have a disgruntled permit process, or someone wants to build, you're the one that's going to take the heat.
That's correct. What is really good about this is camaraderie with the building officials around the state and in the tri-county area is quite wonderful. We talk on a regular basis, we get together on a monthly basis, along with HBA and state representatives, and we get through, usually led by the Portland Building Division, because they have the resources to spend on all kinds of things, and we converse and we collaborate and soundboard quite a bit, because we want to make sure that our customers are getting a uniform experience, not just depending on where they go, jurisdiction to jurisdiction. So, we're all working together to try to be as uniform as possible with our adoption.
Thank you. Nancy?
So, it sounds like this, these changes that are happening, happening so quickly in this first cycle, and then the second cycle of changes that's coming, it sounds like it is going to be difficult and probably make getting projects done in a timely fashion more difficult on our customers, people that are doing projects in the city. Do we have any kind of a strategy, or have we kind of outlined a way about, going about helping people through these changes, and making sure that people that are in the pipeline and people that are doing projects in Toewalton get a little extra? and people that are doing projects in Tuolton get a little extra help, or something to kind of get over this hump as people get used to these new regulations?
Well, the codes have been available online since October. Right now, some of them are backordered as far as the hard copies. We have ordered all the current codes that were on, the ones that are in here, and we have copies within our offices. And I don't foresee a longer plan review time or turnaround time when someone submits a permit, and when they receive the actual permit for construction.
Okay, that's good.
I don't think there's going to be a difference there so much. It's just going to be new regulations that everyone's going to have to get used to designing with and then also enforcing. So what is good is that it's not just Tuolton.
Yeah.
Right.
It's across the industry, so design professionals and general contractors are, know what's coming. It's, it's not going to be any sticker shock in that respect.
Right. Right, well, yeah, I mean, I realize it's not just us, it's everyone, but what I'm thinking is if there's ways we can kind of be proactive with our business development community where, you know, if we need to make more staff members available to go out to projects to help, because I'm sure lots of little mistakes are going to get made along the way as the people that are implementing the code changes get it right. And I'm just thinking if there's a way that we could, you know, staff up a little bit or be a little, a little, I guess, just a little more proactive to help get out on job sites and be available to ask questions or opinions or, you know, help people work their way through, because you're right, it's the people that, that make application and they get the plan and everything, that's one level of people to educate about the changes, and then there's the actual boots on the ground that are having to do the work themselves that, where the little mistakes get made when code changes change, so.
Yeah, I think we'll, we can give that some thought. I, I guess what I see unfolding a little bit is just kind of that happening naturally as we educate ourselves and then are educating the customers, so there's probably a passive approach to what you're getting at that will just naturally happen, and I think we have to give it a little bit more thought if there's something that we can do that's a little more active to, to help people through that process. I'm not, I'm not sure that we've thought about that, just, yeah, we've been a little more caught up than what the codes actually say.
There's actually a simpler way of looking at it, as far as, as you know, when someone submits a building permit, there's construction documents. If those construction documents are further current code, then our inspectors and the contractors build it according to that current code, and there's not going to be much of an issue. As far as flexibility goes, we're really fortunate that the city of Tuolton, because of the size of the jurisdiction and the number of staff we do have, there's a lot of versatility with the number of certifications we have, and staffing to where building inspection staff can come around sometimes more than once in a, in a day to make sure that the folks have complied with whatever requirement was needed. So it's, it's, we're really fortunate with the way the building division has set up, how flexible and minimal it is to provide customer service.
That's good to hear, because I know we've done a lot of work with codes and making things simpler and more concise, and making it very easy to do business with the city, and, you know, it's going to be probably somewhat of a hardship for a lot of areas of the state, but I would love it if, you know, Tuolton is making a difficult change easier than other municipalities, because that's just one more way, you know, for us to put ourselves forward, and, and like you say, if we can get inspectors out sometimes twice in a day to help projects get moved ahead, I mean, I think that's a really good message for the business community.
Well, another thing that helps us do our job even better is the excellent relationship we have with TVFNR. So during inspections and during plan review, we're very hand in glove as far as our fire code requirement and building code requirements, and I know that not all jurisdictions, fire and building are like that in different parts of the state, so we're really lucky to have such good relationships with them.
Good. Thank you, thanks for taking my questions.
Anything else? All right, Robert?
I have a motion for first reading by title only of ordinance 1429-19.
Second?
I have a motion and second for first reading of ordinance 1429-19. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Ordinance number 1429-19, an ordinance relating to the building codes, amending Tuolton Municipal Code 4-1-010 to adopt state building code updates, adding new provisions and declaring an emergency.
Motion for second reading by title only of ordinance 1429-19.
And I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second for a second reading of ordinance 1429-19. Any discussion on that motion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Ordinance number 1429-19, an ordinance relating to the, to building codes, amending Tuolton Municipal Code 4-1-010 to adopt state building code updates, adding new provisions and declaring an emergency.
Motion to adopt ordinance 1429-19.
Roll call.
Do you have a second first?
Oh, do I have to second, or do we go right to roll call? Oh, second.
I have motion and a second to approve ordinance 1429-19 to adopt ordinance 1429-19, and that is a roll call vote. We'll start with Paul. Valerie, Bridgette.
Aye.
Robert.
Aye.
Maria.
Yes.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote, I also, so ordinance is adopted in emergency mode.
Thank you. Good luck.
Paul?
Yeah, I just, on the, the, and I'm, we didn't have our conversation, and so this would have come up in the conversation, but this wouldn't have come under council rules as an emergency, because this was already on the agenda, but I, if I'm not mistaken, the council rules for an emergency are something that's brought up at that meeting, and it has to be unanimous. Isn't that correct? And I don't, don't answer me now, just down the road if you want to, because I don't want to be here till 11 o'clock discussing council rules, but because this was on the agenda, it's the emergency provisions in the charter, not the emergency provisions for a, you have it right there.
I do.
Bless your heart.
It's under voting, and it said the following rules apply to voting on matters before the council unless amended. And number four is emergency clause in ordinance. An emergency ordinance requires the unanimous vote of all council members present, and so it's titled emergency clause in ordinances.
All right, thank you.
Last emergency.
Yeah, all right. I'm going to skip over council communications and do that last. We'll move down to items removed from the consent agenda, and you'll recall that item number two, consideration of resolution number 5478-19, amending the city of Tuolton's fee schedule, and rescinding resolution number 5471-19 was removed, so now we'll have a full discussion. Staff prepared to, come on, Ross.
We weren't prepared to make a presentation, but we can make some comments.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Ross, who's Parks and Recreation Director.
Julie, would you?
So over the past year, Julie and I have met with all the youth sports groups, had a conversation about the way the fields are booked, the process by which they're reserved, historical use, a lot of things that we could improve on. Two items in particular that we found that are big areas and larger areas of improvement, also indicated within our master plan, are, one, we don't have enough field space, and two, that we, that we heard from the, from the field users, we want a higher level of service. Why aren't you lighting the baseball fields and the softball fields? Why aren't the bathrooms cleaned multiple times a day? So that's a really good conversation about these, these different topics with our field users. We are all about getting kids outside, playing outside in our park system, and so we want to be responsive and proactive about how we can help in these areas. It has some really somewhat difficult conversations about historic norms in our city, one of those being a fee, that historically we have not charged a fee, and that really nationally, that's practice, typical practice, is that there's a fee for use. Just like when you turn on your water at home, you get charged a fee based on the quantity of water you use. Pretty typically, entities and agencies will charge for use of fields. The organizations that use those fields, use those, those at their discretion, they control the spigot. You can turn it on and off, they can reserve more or less fields as they need, as they desire, based on their organization's operations. So had a really good conversation, had some organizations obviously voiced concern, what, there's going to be a fee? What? And some say it's about time. What we came to through a number of conversations, how many conversations did we have, Julie?
Because at least four since last January.
Since last January? So four since last January. Some, some of the groups, when we asked, well, what's the right fee? What's the right fee? We've never had a fee. Some groups threw out $10, others threw out one, others threw out zero, and sort of what we landed on is this $5 rate, $5 per hour rate. So what the purpose behind that rate is, is really about efficiency, is that currently it's the use on our fields is based on historical use. So basically, what you had last year as an organization is what you get next year. And so, and we, quite honestly, we don't know if a group doesn't use a field, we don't know it. And so there's probably, anecdotally, and just through staff observations, there are probably many times where fields just are being left vacant. We know and we think that we can better, more efficiently manage the field use with a fee when there's this commitment on part of the, of the user groups that are using the fields. Paying that fee creates a commitment, and then when there's a, when those organizations know they do not need the fields, they'll turn them back to the city, and the city then can reissue those to a different organization that has a need. So creating, in essence, more efficient use creates more field space, more field time that's allocatable. Two, that data, the actual use data, we don't have. We don't know actually who's actually using the fields and who's, who's not, because we don't have that, that commitment created by a fee. And then, you know, what the fee also does is it creates this, this support, this sustainability, this, this, this funding source that provides for a long-term foundational revenue stream that can help offset and potentially answer calls from different user groups to increase level of service. And so, and so things like cleaner restrooms, Ross and Julie, we want cleaner restrooms. We want the garbage emptied more frequently on weekends when we have a big baseball, softball tournament. We want the fields lined, the white chalk lines that you see on fields. We don't provide that service currently. Almost every city does. We want the fields, we want the fields dragged, so a drag will even out the dirt on the infield of a baseball field, which we don't provide. So those services are sort of the typical basket of services you would, you would see supported by this type of a fee. There's also a whole other list that actually goes into, so those groups that are using our fields have a, they're, they are the largest group, our youth sports groups, eighty, eighty-five percent of our reservations are from youth sports groups. A fee would also help support the things that you don't see. It's kind of like an iceberg. You see the field dragging, you see the cleaner restrooms, there's a whole other body of work that, things like aeration, top dressing, overseeding, deep tie net aeration, irrigation on the sports fields, drum rolling, spray applications, these are direct work that we're doing to, only to our sports fields, and eighty-five percent of our users are those youth sports groups. So it supports that work for the benefit of those groups that are using the fields. So that's a, just a really brief, we didn't prepare a presentation tonight, creating sustainability, creating efficiency, providing city staff with data so we can better manage this, is the primary reasons why.
Questions?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I, I feel like a little bit of a knucklehead, but I can't exactly figure out from the grid that you gave, what would an average baseball little league group that rents one of our fields for one of their games, what would they pay? Because I see it's in one-hour increments, but, I mean, sometimes it takes them 45 minutes to get their setup and schlep all their stuff out to get the field ready to go. So what, I mean, what's the, like, real per-use fee that these clubs would incur?
Yeah, so it's about, a baseball game is, I don't know, 90 minutes maybe, in baseball, maybe two hours. It varies, because it's based on innings, not time, so, yeah, $10, $10, $15, that's a total of three hours, it would be $15.
Okay, and it's not like incremental fee where it's the field and then the lights that you have to have to be able to play on the field, do those all just stack on top of each other?
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it'll be based on actual use. So, for example, if there's a rainout, the group calls and says, "We had a rainout on this there," they track it, and at the end of the quarter, we, we do the accounting so that the group doesn't pay for that, that, just if there's a rainout. With lights, let's say there's a $1 fee for lights.
Right.
Actual cost for lights is an actual cost for make, for the, just the operations of those, much, much higher.
Much more than a dollar.
But again, it's about commitment, data, and creating that sustainable, long-term path.
And then, yeah, I just, I, I appreciate what you're saying in the $5 and $1 increments, I think sound great. I think where I was getting a little bit off track, and thanks for pulling this, Paul, because I did want to ask these questions, it's like the, when we started getting into the non-resident and some of, thank you, some of the other, I've lost the page, but it's, was the getting into the 20 and 40 and $80 range, and I was thinking for, you know, certain sport, youth groups, that would be, I mean, per game, I mean, that would be an enormous fee.
No, it's just the $5.
Okay.
Those are the different categories that we charge rates to, so we have a resident rate, non-resident rate, our youth fee rate, and then our commercial.
Okay.
But they don't, they don't stack up, they don't double up.
Okay.
So again, what, so the different categories are, eighty-five percent are youth sports.
Right.
The large majority of the remaining time is city programming or unused, unreserved space, and then there are a few small other user groups that do book field times, like adult softball, for example. So those are, but the, but the bulk of this is, and a lot of our, the bulk of our time is spent with our youth sports groups. Those are our local youth sports organizations that are based in Tuolton that have priory booking, so nobody can book before those youth sports groups.
Okay.
They get first priory every quarter.
Paul? Ben, Maria?
Yeah, I find it interesting that when I pulled the fee schedule, which is multiple pages long, that you clearly knew what the issue was, which indicates to me that the angst going on in the youth programs is a little bit greater than we seem to think. And first off, let me go a couple of things, just to answer one of the questions that was brought up. Baseball is, youth baseball is not necessarily an inning sport, it is hour and 45 minutes, or seven innings until 14U, and then it's two hours or seven innings, and those are drop-dead times, no new inning begins. If it's a tournament, it's usually no, it's usually drop-dead, you just stop and go back to the last complete inning. So here's the, here's the other issue. Tuolton youth baseball, every time they raise their fees, and they've had to occasionally raise their fees, they lose participants. They have voted if this fee schedule... They have voted, if this fee schedule passes, and we're only talking, by the way, I have no issue with any other fee structure on here, I've heard nothing from anybody other than the sports field. And I've heard nothing from any of the commercial people, including, we have a commercial program here in the city, Northwest Diamond Sports, who doesn't use our fields because he needs multiple fields, but he has no problem with a fifty-dollar fee. And that's a commercial operation that would, would pay that, and that's not an issue for him. Twelveth Baseball is going to raise their fee for next year, fifty dollars to cover the cost. So, this five dollars is a lot more than five dollars. It's fifty dollars a player, and they expect to lose quite a number of kids. Girls softball, their board meeting is Thursday. They haven't decided yet, but it'll be somewhere in the fifty to seventy-five dollar range. They have fewer kids participating, so the cost is spread around to more kids. Their budget for next, based on historical, is eighty-five hundred dollars. It's what they'll have to pay, that they didn't pay in the past. And quite frankly, they don't have eighty-five hundred dollars. And so, their, the fee schedule goes into effect. Twelveth Youth Softball, which is girl, girls is softball, boys is baseball. Some girls play on the baseball team, but no boys play on the softball teams, and that's the way it is. Twelveth Soccer, they expect to have lower registration rates next fall because they're gonna raise their fees twelve dollars. Now, they're spreading a lot more kids out over fewer fields, which is why it's a twelve-dollar fee. But these are, these are big numbers for these organizations, not money that they do not have. And this is what I'm proposing, and in talking to several of the organizations, at the end of the day, we need, they acknowledge, we need maintenance dollars. However, they're frustrated because they were understanding that the city was moving towards an operating levy that would pay for the maintenance of the fields. And so, their frustration level is, why are you moving forward on operating levy to play, pay for maintenance, and now you're gonna charge us fees for something that you've never charged before? So, my request is really simple, and that is, put a pause on the sports fees until we figure out what we're gonna do with the maintenance. If we're not gonna go forward with an operating levy, if we're not gonna go forward with a utility fee to pay for park maintenance, then yeah, we definitely need to start looking at fees and the organizations. But it, let me back up here. It won't be eighty-five hundred for girls softball, because as they said, their historical usage will have to go down significantly because they can't, they don't have that money. They just, without charging rates and losing half their kids. So, I would just like to see us pause for, till the spring, and see where we go with our operating levy and, or, or whatever form we, the council chooses. I mean, I made it clear, my favorite was an operating levy. I know some people spoke about a utility fee to pay for maintenance, but let's see where that is first, before we then go out and start charging fees to these, and these are the nonprofits, these are all, these are all, by rule, they are Twelveth residents, Twelveth Youth Baseball, Twelveth Youth Soccer, Twelveth Girls Softball, they are residents. Now, technically, you get a few outside, because you get some people from Bull Mountain who technically are in the Twelveth School District, and you get a few people down Borland Road who have a Twelveth City address, even though they go to Wilsonville, Westland School District, but they, by rule, they participate in JBO Baseball with the city of Twelveth. So, these are Twelveth residents, and, and as you said, eighty-five percent of the field is used, but they also cooperate a lot. I know personally, I have personal experience where we did not reserve a field for a fall baseball practice, but just kind of used part of the field that the soccer team was using. The soccer team was more than happy to share the field. My understanding is that kind of cooperation, if there's a fee involved, would probably go away. I'm not saying that there, but we already know some coaches are just gonna say, hey, I paid for this field, I'm not sharing it. Right now, there's a lot of cooperation. And so, I would just like a pause until we figure out what we're gonna do and how we're gonna take a much bigger approach to the maintenance of the fields, before we start asking Twelveth Youth to help pay for it.
Other questions, comments? Maria?
This probably has been discussed in the past, or somehow I've missed all this stuff about the parks and, and the fees and who has priority, who doesn't. I, since I was, I started attending the Diversity Task Force probably three years ago, the biggest issue they have had was, how do they get to rent the field to use it for soccer? According to some of them, and I'm talking about, I don't know, five, maybe four or five individuals, saying, we never get a chance to either, or we don't, first of all, they don't really know how to access the, the form that they need to fill out, or, and maybe it's not as, I guess, it could be a little expensive for them. So, they were wondering, how does that work, number one? They also feel that every time they wanna sign up for, for some kind of, to use a field for soccer, and I think they can, there's, there's always, it's always already used because other, other groups outside that are non-resident pay higher fees. So, somehow, in their minds, and I'm not saying it's happening, they feel that because they pay more, they have priorities. So, I don't know if that's correct or not. When you say eighty-five percent of the usage are for, are groups from the community, are that, is that residents or outside individuals?
Yeah, it's the, it's the youth sports nonprofit groups, it's the baseball, softball, soccer, football, footsall.
From Twelveth.
Local lacrosse, local Twelveth and sport, youth sports groups.
Okay. So, just, just these, just that, that conversation that maybe at one point, we can have it with the, the Spanish-speaking community and let them know, cause they're the ones that, they're interested in soccer, and they're interested in even when the fees begin and when all the, when we gave the presentation at the Diversity Task, when you talked about when we're gonna start building, now that we've done, we've done the plan, they were wondering, what's gonna be first? What, are we gonna still be waiting for a soccer field? Or are we gonna, how, how is that gonna be done? What the priorities are gonna look like? How can we have access to that? And that we're not part of any nonprofit groups or any sports group, we just kind of wanna form a league, but we don't know how to do that, we don't know where to begin. So, those are the, those are the questions that were told, and they were just kind of asking me and see if I can ask for them, because they might not have the, the time to come in and ask those questions. But they were like, they were, they were just asking me, how do we do this? How do we get to use the park, especially at Fallade, since they're, the community that they're talking about is closer to that, that park? They also told me that at one point, they were, they were okay to use, somebody gave them the, okay to use the park down by Jergens, and it had, it was kind of holy, and, I don't mean holy, like, I mean, like holes in the ground. And a lot of their kids twisted their ankles, so it's not level to a point where they can actually run freely and not fall or twist their ankle or something happening to, they, I think they had like about five kids that were sprained, that have sprained ankles. So, just, just help me understand, because I don't know the answers to that, because I don't, I just used the park to walk around. Yeah.
So, so, yes, there's a higher standard, a higher level of maintenance on athletic fields, that eighty-five percent of the use is the youth sports groups, because of safety is one of the reasons, and just quality of play. Many of our fields are used for tournaments and games, and so, the, the youth sports groups want these to be in nice, safe condition. And so, yes, absolutely want to make sure that happens. To answer your question about our Spanish-speaking soccer players, generally speaking, historical use, use where the established group use rolls from year to year, can make it feel like there's no way for a new organization to get space. And so, I don't know the specifics, but I'm, I'm speaking generally about that type of model. I don't know the specifics, cause I don't have the data. And so, we don't know. We don't know what's actually happening on the fields.
So, yeah.
What I would say is this, creating a fee helps create that sense of commitment and allows city staff to gain more data in terms of actual use, which will in turn allow for more efficient use and scheduling and management of the space, which we firmly believe will lead to more availability.
So, currently, they just kind of, these groups that you're saying, established groups have almost grandfathered like every year, and, and we don't know how to like, we don't know, they just sort of have just done it every year, and it feels like they've taken priority, even though that's not the case, but that's, that it feels, it feels that way.
Yeah, there's been established use for many years, the, the, these, the main user groups that are there. And they're great, they're fantastic organizations, they do amazing things for youth of Twelveth. But, to your point about Spanish-speaking, creating a new group, how does that new group get in to that rotation? And so, the new athletic field scheduling guide, and the work that we've done with the different groups, was, it was in part to address that, and it's in part addressed by creating fee to create that, that data.
The data.
Management ability that it allows, to, to allow for those new groups to have space.
Okay. In question, because like I say, I have no prior information other than what I've been hearing for the last three years from this group. What is currently the cost for, for someone to, for a group to rent the field?
Zero.
So, right now, zero?
Zero for our local Twelveth Youth League, we have a resident.
Right, the nonprofits that you were talking about? But for other groups, it's just, you are paying no fees right now. And five dollars, you say five dollars an hour? So, the reason I'm asking these questions, I wanna understand it myself, so I can explain it, right? And there, there's, if they have questions, I can answer it correctly. So, if you put the fees, will be five dollars per hour, right? That's.
For the youth.
For the youth.
Nonprofit sports leagues.
Youth nonprofits. And for non-youth nonprofits, if they ask that question?
The resident or the non-resident rate, and you have, I did not bring that with me. I believe it's.
It's in a packet.
For residents?
It's ten or twenty-two fifty.
Oh. I'm sorry, ten dollars.
Yeah.
So, ten dollars for non, for residents, but that, that they are non-nonprofits, or is that, is that what I'm seeing?
Regular, regular city Twelveth residents.
Okay, ten dollars.
And that's been our established rate.
Per hour, okay.
That's not changing. Correct.
Okay. So, is that gonna be in addition, or is that just, okay? So, yeah, I'll bring, I mean, it's just those questions that I've been, when you brought this up, I'm like, I'm just gonna ask all those questions, cause I have no idea. And, just trying to think. I, I do think that, I mean, I, I feel like the data will help us understand more, and if there's a fee to that, that we, I, I think, I think five, ten dollars is, is doable, so.
Other questions, comments?
I have a, just like, I'm having a math brain cramp, I guess. So, if, say, the, I go to Paul's example that he was giving, if it's two hours for a baseball game roughly, so that would be ten dollars a game for a team, and if they play twenty times, that's, you know, two hundred dollars over the season for rental fees. I'm not seeing how that would equate to, Paul, you saying that their rates were going up fifty dollars per child?
Can, can I, so, there's.
So, I'm not getting the connect there.
No, so, I'll, I'll just tell you, based on my experience with, working with, with youth, they have ninety minutes of practice twice a week usually, and so, each team has three hours of practice. Game time is actually three hours, cause you have a one-hour warm-up period, and then you have the field for two hours.
Okay, all right. I was thinking about practice.
And, and then, again, it's amazing how fast five dollars an hour can add up for a youth organization that's fielding T-ball, which is really popular. Although, most of the T-ball, very little T-ball is, would be involved with this, because most of the T-ball is done on, at Byram, Bridgeport, and elementary schools. And they currently, and have currently no plans, charge any fees to the organizations for the use of their fields. They do not charge. So, the, this is, then you get into the ten U, which is where they need, I Buck is a ten U and a twelve U field with shorter base paths. Jergens is the larger base pass for the fourteen U's, and they have, you know, and so on and so forth. So, that's where you get, and you're going with, trying to think, it's been a number of years, cause my son's been playing tournament ball now for years, and he's now in high school ball, but if I remember correctly, JBO had approximately five twelve U teams, usually anywhere from three to five eight U teams, three to five fourteen U teams. So, I mean, it just adds up. You get fifteen teams and.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking about all the hours of practice being done on the exact same field, so that's, okay, thank you.
Julie, do you have some information that?
We have some, well, we have some data, but, just full disclosure, this is not a hundred percent accurate, because our field scheduling is not a hundred percent accurate, because we're looking at that kind of blanket looking.
Sure.
But based off of last year, to take youth softball as an example, they have a lot of hours. So, they had, in our system, booked one thousand six hundred and eighty-six hours. They have hundred and sixty-six players, that's from our annual youth sports meeting where they give us the rosters. So, that would calculate, if we're gonna pay a five-dollar an hour fee, that would be, and Paul, you were very, very close, it's eight thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. Now, that would be based off of the, those field numbers, those reservation hours, which we know are inflated. So, it won't be that much, I can't say exactly how much less, but, so that's where that, that number comes from.
Okay.
And just to speak a little bit to that, that five-dollar fee, where that came from. So, we did have those discussions starting, it was actually, I believe, it was January of last year, the early leagues. And we talked about the ten dollars, five dollars, one dollars, year dollars, and then what I did was do some research on what are other communities doing around this, because obviously, we don't wanna be, we're not, we're not charging something that else is doing. So, we looked at Hillsborough, THP, Wilsonville, Sherwood, Lakeview, Tiger, Westland, and Oregon City. And when we took that average, and some of them are by hours and per players, we took the total fee and we charged that group per year, and came up with what that average cost would be. The average, including a couple cities that actually don't charge anything, that average was five dollars and twenty-one cents. So, that's where we felt like it was pretty right on target to say a five-dollar fee would be something that we'd have in a virtual fee. That's what I came to.
Thank you.
My view is, I kind of agree with Paul to maybe pause on this a few months, to see what we do decide about funding our Parks Master Plan and what we, I mean, we're gonna have to decide, talk about February, we have to have it wrapped up, if we're gonna go out in May.
Yes.
So, in two, I mean, in two months, to me, I agree with Paul that if we just wait two months on this and see where we're gonna go, if we decide not to do that, revisit this again, I mean, I, realistically, we're not talking a lot of money here yet in two months. So, waiting for two months to figure out, see how we're gonna finance the maintenance and improvements of our parks, cause I certainly don't wanna drive, the biggest thing I hear about kids with organized sports is they can't afford to get into it. I mean, and I don't wanna put a barrier up that we might not have to. I do wanna get the stats and stuff like that, so maybe come back, and it's maybe a dollar an hour to pay for the administrative time, I don't, we can get into that later. But, to me, waiting a couple of months isn't gonna kill us to find out what we're gonna do, what direction we're gonna go into. And then, you know, if we're not gonna implement anything anytime soon, yeah, kick this in and, you know, start getting that maintenance we know we need, and move on, but that's my take. I don't know what people are thinking. Our former Parks person here, Valerie.
Yeah, where I stand. I, I get what you're saying, and I've actually recently run into a bunch of, at social events, some parents that have kids in these programs, and, and I was asking more about the other, you know, ways of payment we were talking about, and I got a very positive response, as they're willing to pay, but I got a lot of negativity about the quality of the field and the availability. So, I just in the end want some kind of funding to have better quality fields.
Definitely, yep. You got that, look, Bridget.
I'll say something. I appreciate, I don't want costs to be a barrier for.
I appreciate, I don't want costs to be a barrier for people either. At the same time, I also don't want people running around on ruddy fields and twisting their ankles. And I don't want people to feel like they're locked out of systems because we don't know who's using the fields when. So I think that I like the idea that you have a fee-based structure so that people that are using the fields are investing in the fields. Not only for their own, you know, quality of the fields and things like that, but also in in the durability issues. But also for, you know, if they're not utilizing the fields, to letting the city know that they're not utilizing the fields. So that other groups have been waiting can use the field. So I heard that piece and I don't think we can do that a different way. And I don't know what the number is, like if five dollars is a barrier, if it's a little bit less. I don't think that we have to be the lowest price SDCs, the lowest price, like we're the lowest price funding for all the parks. When our community loves our parks so much and I think it's an asset that we should not have a lot of deferred maintenance on things that get heavy used. So I, you know, even if it was like three, four dollars, if it was like this huge cost barrier, but I don't know what it is per kid. I know when I was in sports, we had to pay, we had to pay for fields, we had to pay for pools, we had to pay for things that we utilized. And that was way back in the dark ages and we had to pay. So I think that, I think that, you know, if, and then I guess my other. Yeah, I just see it from the management perspective as far as people, you know, people actually utilizing the fields when they say they're utilizing the fields and being committed to that. It just sounds like that's kind of where we're driving to and I just don't know how we can do that with a with a different kind of funding source. I don't think that's gonna answer that that problem. So while I appreciate what you're talking about, I'm not really, I think that getting, giving kids access and making sure the fields are utilized when they say they're being utilized is a, it sounds smart.
Oh, and I have one other question.
As far as the people, is there ways that you can sign up that there are bilingual forms and calendars? And also if we did do fees and there were struggling organizations, is there ways that we could do a scholarship fund? Or any kind of pass for an organization or group that for hardship? Thanks.
Yeah, all all of the youth sports groups offer scholarship programs currently and continue to, they exist for for kids to play. And then in terms of bilingual applications and forms, and absolutely, we will, we are working to get most of our forms and documents translated.
I do recall that was one of the state of the city announcements that we're gonna translate all the documents so people can have access and reading their own language. And the reason why I'm asking all this is because of the fees that we're thinking of, you know, the whether whether it's gonna be utility or property, whatever that is gonna, that's gonna look like. They are asking those questions because they're they're saying, well, if we're gonna start paying in some way or another, we want to be able to have a voice as well. And and be able to utilize the facilities that are out there for us. And 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 so they're quite, they're more, they were mostly concerned about also these groups that are already established. And how do, like you say, how do they get into that rotation, whether, how do, yeah, how do they start? And and I and I agree, some 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 fee out there that can, or something that can help us identify if these feel, a group might sign up and not show up. And then, but there are people waiting to to show up. So those are just the things that I, that I, as all of us are talking, it's just, you know, questions are coming to me, so thank you.
So, wait, does someone have a motion or suggestion?
I have a suggestion.
Do you? Oh, Valerie?
It doesn't sound like anybody's ready to make a big decision here tonight, so my suggestion would be we kind of throw this in with, you know, maybe delay it for a couple of months and throw it in with our other funding options like you were suggesting. But having a part of that discussion, so we're all agreeing at that time.
There's only one part of this that we're debating, right? So.
Yeah, just the fee.
Unless somebody else has it.
Just for the nonprofit.
So the other entire, so it seems like there's a way of making a motion just with taking the one piece out.
Okay, so Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe, and Robert, I think you know this way better than I do, someone needs to make a motion, second it. And then there would be an amendment to the motion to remove, or at least my, I would make that amendment to then remove the youth serving nonprofit section from the fee bill. And then everything would proceed, correct, Sean, is that?
See, you can amend, you can make an amendment first if you so choose.
So you just make the motion with the amendment?
Correct.
All right, well, then, it's any more discuss, we'll have discussion after. Hang on.
So i- if you were to make, if you were to, if the goal was to remove the fees and. Not all the fees, just the youth fees, I believe it's on page seven referencing the sports fields, youth serving nonprofit. And also on page seven, the artificial turf fields, youth serving nonprofit, the five dollar fees related to those.
Correct, and we're not even, the sports light fees are not in dispute because you're already, I believe you're already charging for sports lights, correct? You're not even charging for, oh, my information was bad. All right, well, so then I would move that we adopt, hang on, resolution five four seven eight dash one nine, Tuolton fee schedule amended to remove sports fields, youth serving nonprofit section.
So we want to only take out just the youth serving.
The other fees are already have been charged.
Okay.
Those are ongoing.
Yeah, I'm good with that, I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number fifty-four seventy-eight dash nineteen with an amendment that we do not include in the fee schedule, the not-for-profit youth sports programs. Is that capsulated, right?
I I think we would probably zero that column out, so like that column would be zero.
I'll second that also.
So I got a motion and a second on that, this is, is this roll call or vote since this was a consent agenda item, is it just?
What's a resolution now under?
It it's now polled, so it'd be on.
It'd be considered a polled motion, so it'd be a roll call.
Okay. Okay, so if we had the motion and second, so we get, we gotta vote on approving it, then do a roll call?
So the, so, so if you.
We gotta get a vote on the motions and then if it's approved, we get to the roll call.
So so the motion was made to adopt with the amendment.
Right.
Yes.
And seconded.
Correct.
So now it's just.
And then we have to approve it.
So now it's, now it's just roll call, if it if it's not adopted, then you could advance a new motion.
Okay. Paul?
Yes.
Valerie? Bridget?
No.
Robert?
Aye.
Maria? Nancy? Okay.
Let me go back and understand what we're voting on right now, like, I mean, I thought we were talking about fees and all that, so I'm just.
So the, what we're gonna do is we're voting on the schedule, we're approving the schedule, we're changing the five dollars to one dollars, we're making it zero dollars at this point. And in my mind, for nonprofits, youth sports. And then we may revisit this in the future after we have our discussion about park levies and bonds and stuff like that. We might come back and revisit this in the event you don't make any advancement on a levy or bond or something to part, to fund the parks master plan.
So just wait, it's just wait until whenever we're ready. I can vote on that, yes.
Yeah, but the other fees for the sports fields will stay as they are.
Will stay as they are right now.
We're just not adding the one for you.
Well, that, yeah, that that sounds good, yes. I just didn't know what we were doing, we're like, I mean, we're still gonna go ahead and help everybody else. Yes.
No problem asking. Nancy?
Aye.
And I'm aye, all right. So a resolution passes with the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Rob, thank you, Julie.
All right. Winding down now, we're up to council communications, we usually do this during work session, but we were running a little light on time, so we'll do that now. And I'll start off to my right with Paul.
Okay, so I tended the, and I'll let you speak, Frank, on the transit town hall. I just want to make one comment that my sense from that town hall was that the two oh five was well on its way to being done and to finding a way to get it funded. That was the sense I got, the question was asked to the majority speaker who sat in the back of the room and what was more important was what she didn't say. And and so that was step one. I then attended the R one act meeting Monday and ODOT basically made a presentation on tolling as something in the future. But also stated that two oh five is shovel-ready. And I got the impression, and then, and I'm gonna, I'll make another comment in a second, but I got the impression from that meeting that they felt they had funding. That that it was just a matter of where the money was coming from, but that they were planning on starting in twenty twenty-two. And in fact, and I didn't, I wrote her name down and I have her title and it's at home, of course, it doesn't do me any good here. But she had said, we anticipate starting construction on two oh five widening from Stafford to the bridge and completing the widening of the bridge in twenty twenty-two. I then, at the C four meeting, confirmed that with two of the voting members of the R one act, asking what their impression was. And without any prompting, they both gave me the exact same response, that their feeling was, ODOT feels that that they have funding and that this is going to happen. So then that actually became an an item at the C four meeting and the committee voted unanimously for only to support a single short-term project. Which according to people who follow these things and know these things a lot better than I do, they believe funding for the two oh five will be brought up in the short session. And that it will pass, provided, if those of you watch Scott Van Pelt, you know, there's always, there's the speed and the antics and there goes the antics. And so if there's a a carbon tax, brouhaha again, that causes a disruption in the entire voting scheme, then all bets are off. But there seems to be a very high level of confidence among a lot of the elected officials who have a much higher pay grade than me, that this is something that's gonna happen. So that to me was was really good news, I was happy to hear it. Also, as I stated earlier, during the R twenty forty presentation, spent a lot of time at the C four meeting on the housing needs assessment and they're moving along. If there's any opportunity right behind the hospital for that vacant land, I know some of it is wetlands and some of it is not. But it just seems to me that something to look into down the road, because Clackamas County has funds and they're looking for projects. That's right on a bus line, it's right across the street from apartment buildings already, just something to to look into. And it may not be possible, but it's just, again, another idea to throw out there. And I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Valerie?
Mine's kind of light, I went to holiday lights. And it was wonderful and Heidi, of course, did a great job as usual and the kids were out there having a great time. And and the youth advisory committee, they're always out there. And the one thing I wanted to mention that I think is so great that our community does are those people with the little miniature boats with the lights, the kids just love them. That's it for me.
Bridget?
Well, for me, it was the transportation town hall as well. I didn't stay for the Q and A, but I was there for the presentation and.
Missed the whole B city discussion.
Yes, I missed the B city.
You walk out, we're talking about B city.
Well, I just, yeah, I felt like there was enough of us there that maybe I should go. And the second thing, I had something else I had to do. So and all, everybody that was up there had two minutes to speak. I would have loved to have heard more conversation from the audience, but many of our elected spoke well longer than their two minutes, so it was a nice idea. Not to go on and on, I, but I thought it was, what I, what I took from it was that, you know, there were a lot of people up on the panel. Representative Prusak organized and was able to pull together different representatives from different levels of government and agencies to work together and talk together about how they see our transportation conversation going. And I think that, to me, it was really helpful as a newly elected person because there was a lot of different conversations with a lack of alignment occasionally and confusing. So to have everyone there in the spirit, in a collaborative spirit, working together was was good work, I thought, from our elected officials. So I was happy to see that and are also Metro and who was the other one that was there, Triment? So that was good and I thought you did a good job, Frank, our mayor. And the second thing was I was also at the tree lighting. I thought that the city, again, did a really wonderful job. I thought it was too bad it was the same night as the football playoffs, but nonetheless, some of us were there and we know how to use our DVRs. The the thing that I was very touched by this year was the, what's the name of the chorus?
Crimsoners.
Crimsoners, I keep wanting to call them Rose something, Crimsoners, and they were fantastic. And I just think that everybody had a really great time that came out. There were a few new restaurants that I hadn't been to before there, there was all kinds of, I just think it's a really great event. It's one of my favorite things to do and it really helps kick off the holiday season. So happy holidays to everyone and if you never have a chance to go this year, try it next year. It's it's just such an easy thing to do, seeing all the kids dressed up, all the boats, all the singing, the mayor talking, you know, it's quite Santa. It's really a special place and I don't think everyone else, you know, you get to take pictures with the tree reflecting on the pond and not all the other cities have that kind of a thing. So your pictures turn out really neat and I just think it's really nice, anyway, that's it.
Thanks. Robert?
Great, well, keeping with the tradition of starry lights and holiday, no, yeah, starry nights, holiday lights, I was there.
He was, he was there?
I was there, my my daughter sang in the fourth grade choir from Bridgeport, that was one of those parental moments that you'll never forget. Perhaps would have been a little more special if I hadn't spent the day touring most of Washington County with the same group singing at Washington Square Mall and Rookwood Senior Facility and other places. But anyway, wonderful effort by city staff putting it on, also want to thank the sponsors who contributed the hot apple cider, which was really good, and the cookies, and I think it was New Seasons, right?
New Seasons and Starbucks.
Yeah, so it's good to get in word for them, so thank you for that. Looking forward, Southwest Corridor, Monday, December sixteenth, nine AM at Tiger, City Hall, we will be making a decision, the steering committee, on the route and the terminus, the preferred terminus. I understand from previous discussions amongst this group that we're still pushing for an above-grade crossing over Boone's Ferry. Pedestrian improvements at Seventy Second and a larger parking garage. So as long as I see heads shaking like this, then that's the message I'm gonna carry on Monday and that'll be the vote that I'll cast. So that's all, happy holidays, everybody.
Maria?
Not much, I mean, everyone has talked about the event at the comments and the kids and the singing and all that, so that's, it was wonderful. I I was just there for maybe about ten minutes and then I went to Hagan's. Definitely just want to say to everyone out there, happy holidays, Feliz Navidad, thank you.
Nancy?
I think what I want to say is how happy and proud and heartwarming it is to see so much of the community give so much of themselves and so much of their time and energy for.
for the events that we have in this community. And in that, I also include city staff, because so much of our city staff is also people that live right here in the city. And they volunteer and show up and work hard and work long hours. And, you know, events like that are so special, but I just love the sense of community that comes from that. And, you know, regardless of the time of year, I mean, we have at least once a quarter some large community event, and it just never fails to inspire me and just make me feel so grateful to see so many people out there enjoying the event, and then so many people giving of themselves and their time to pull those events off. And I just, you know, this time of year, you feel thankful and you feel grateful, and I think that's the two overwhelming things I'm feeling right now when I see our community and what everybody does to make it a special place to live. So I just want to say thank you to everybody up here and to staff and all the time and effort that goes into making those some really special events for our population, and I appreciate that.
All right. Let's see, on December 2nd, I had a lunch with Dr. Sue, the superintendent of TTSD. She won lunch, lunch with the mayor at a Mitch auction. So I finally called and said, "When are you going to collect on this thing?" Yeah, it's a long time ago. So we, we met and had a terrific lunch, discussed a whole bunch of stuff. One of those being, several things, one was, you know, her feeling and the school district's feeling on urban renewal and what she thought about it, and if, you know, if we were to decide to go that way, what we might expect from the school district. We also talked about school district boundaries and the concern about the Salt Creek being in Sherwood, and a lot of folks would prefer that be in Twalton, so we had a really good discussion on that. And then a discussion about the land that's behind Twalton Elementary School on 95th, possible uses of that, of, there's all different ideas out there, but they are moving ahead and slowly, glacially, as the school district does, you know, who are we to talk, about possible uses, because they do, they're busting at the seams administratively-wise, administrative-wise. They need another admin facility, and that's one of the things they're looking at there, maybe possibly. And then I asked her about, we had that presentation from Work Systems, and how several of the school districts are partners with Work Systems, and TTSD is not. And she was not aware of that. So she's going to look into that for us. But it was a really good lunch, we're going to get back together to discuss the school boundary thing, because she, of course, finds it very intriguing for TTSD about a change in school district boundaries, but we'll see where that goes. The transportation town hall, several people already talked about it. Just want to mention that our Senator Wagner was there also, in addition to our neighbor, Gary Sherrato, the mayor of Durham, was there, and Kathleen Harrington, or Catherine Harrington, representing Washington County. And we were, we were kind of chuckling in the back that Rachel's same town hall over in West Lynn did not go as well. So it was a welcome relief that she saw a bunch of folks who are actively working together, the city, the county, the state, Metro, and Trimest, and that we're all in sync and where we want to go as far as Southwest Corridor improvements on our infrastructure here versus a lot of the infighting we're seeing elsewhere in Clackamas County. Went to the WEA lunch, West Side Economic Alliance, Rock Creek, the president of Rock Creek, PCC, Sylvania, oh, excuse me, Rock Creek PCC campus was there. He's been in the job about a year, talking about the different programs they got going on out there, and some of the biggest popular programs they had, I didn't know they were offering this, they have an aviation program, they have aviation maintenance, they have welding, a lot of things that we don't see at Sylvania, so I was asking him, they have pretty good ties with the Hillsboro School District. I said, "So if our school district and our kids wanted to learn welding or aviation, pilot, you know, being a pilot, aviation maintenance, is there a possibility you could work with TTSD?" He's like, "Yeah, we could, we're more than willing to work for CTE credits, all the stuff, you know, we want to get the kids into with our Dr. Sue's Work Ready Program." So I'm going to follow up with him on how that would work, or, because it would be kind of tough to get kids out to Rock Creek, because it's, it's out there. But interesting about, because I've been in Rock Creek a few times, I obviously go to Sylvania a lot more, but that campus is growing like crazy. They just went through a whole big revitalization, rebuilding, so interesting story out there. The tree lighting, that was a lot of fun. Part of the tree lighting, you're in the dark. So trying to recognize the sponsors, good thing I have my phone, because you're not going to be able to read off paper, you know, recognizing the sponsors over there. I want to, we talked about Starbucks and New Seasons, want to recognize Lee Farms, who supplied all the Christmas trees. And then Brow Betty over here supplies some financial support, as did State Farm. So I got to get those plugs in for them. But yes, city staff did a great job. I mean, seems like the whole Parks and Rec staff was there that night. Everybody was there, hands on deck. And what I'm thankful about that is the rain held off. It held off to the last minute, but it did hold off. And then, yeah, the Crimsoners did a great job. I believe we had seven choirs that night, over the few hours, it was a lot, of course. Yeah, yep, yep, yep. Spent today, I'm going to hand these out, so Susan Nowak and I went to AARP's, the Age Friendly Oregon Summit, and it was a whole day of what it takes to make cities and municipalities more age-friendly, and the things that are happening in the community. The morning was spent on mass presentations, if you will, then the afternoon was on work sessions. Governor Brown kicked off the stuff, the day-to-day, followed by Ted Wheeler. Susan Nowak and I have bunches, I mean, this is all the stuff I got out of AARP, they're out, and aggressively, I shouldn't say aggressively, they really want to get more and more communities to look at their age-friendly certification and age-friendly process. The Aging Task Force looked at this four years ago and wants to look at it again, maybe, you know, if, if there's the ability for Twalton to look at it. Sisters just became a age-friendly city, a town of a few thousand, but it was amazing, because they were there today explaining their transportation challenges. But what I handed out here was a really good handout that Chris Haglen was there today, also from the city, about ADUs, the, a lot of good information about the positives, the negatives, history of ADUs, and what do you call it, dispelling some of the common myths about ADUs. And that second handout, I'm thinking, is the housing one, will be pretty important when we start looking at the House in 2040, when we're talking about implementing actions. It's a whole bunch of best practices from AARP to think about, you know, living in place, aging in place. So it was a really good day-to-day, it's, my mind's like jam-full of different things. They had one presenter, who I guess is world-renowned, Gil Penalosa, he had 470 slides, but it never got boring. The guy is, he is passionate about communities need to be for, from age eight to 80, and if you, if you take care of the needs of those who are between eight and 80, you're golden, that's, that's the ideal community. And he's been all over the world, and he's just flipping through stuff like you wouldn't believe, and you didn't realize how fast he went through his slides, but terrific presenter. I'm going to take some stuff back, Multnomah County was there, Mayor Bennett of Salem presented on, they joined in 2017 as age-friendly city. So maybe we'll talk about it in the future, but go and take a look at those handouts. I think there's a lot of good information. There's a lot more, we can order more if we want some more, but it was a terrific event. And that's it for me, just the same thing, wishing everybody happy holidays, a happy new year. And that's it for tonight, I think. Motion to adjourn? Motion second for adjournment, those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Have a good evening, and again, happy holidays.